Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I wanted to make sure that, I know you see a few council members who are not here. Councilman Harper is actually on vacation. He has a daughter about to graduate high school and have a scheduled family outing. And Councilman Hayes is not here, what is today. Of course, she had a minor traffic accident. She is doing well. A little bruised, a little sore, but she said she is in good spirits and she should be back doing her council duties in a few weeks. So, we wish her all the best and prayers go to her and her family. I'd like to ask Pastor Fair lead us in the invocation.
As he's coming up, I just want to say real quick, congratulations to him. He just had a baby girl, Nora Lynn, three weeks early, I think. Everything's good, so just wanted to congratulate you on that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Would you pray with me? God, we do thank you so much for today and just the blessings in life that you've given us, God, the weather that you've sent our way. But, God, as we come here tonight to do your business as a city of Northport, I pray for our leaders here, God, for each elected official and, God, every person that is present here. That you give us wisdom and vision, God, clarity for our future and our lives, God, that you would lead us in the path of righteousness, God, to do your will in all that we do and say. We ask all this now in Christ's most holy and precious name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Swan, call roll, please.
President Logan.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Councilman Sims.
Here.
Up for him, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item five is the approval of the agenda. In our pre-meeting, Mr. Swan brought forth three items to be added to the agenda. They were items eight B six, eight B seven, and eight B eight. With that being said, if council has no objections, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, adding items eight B six, eight B seven, and eight B eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Visitors to address our council, Mr. Eddie Fulmer. Eddie, how are you?
I'm good, sir.
Good.
I'm good, sir. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and address y'all. I was prepared last meeting, but got a phone call and was asked to put it off by Councilman Sullivan, and I tried to honor his request by doing so. I'm here, as you probably know, to talk about the weapons restricted signs on the doors of our City Hall. I'd like to go back just a little bit and cover just a little bit of history to get us where we are today. In 2013, legislated by an act, established complete control of weapons, and it was restated and placed in the code of Alabama. This restatement was made even stronger than what was already in our laws. The legislature takes preemption on anything touching firearms, anything. I think that's pretty easy to understand. Any restrictions that have anything to do with a firearm will be controlled by laws that only come from the legislature. And around mid-2012, the City Hall was adorned with some new no weapon signs. This is what they look like. If anybody else wants to see them in the back. At this time, or around this time, the city attempted to write their own laws on weapons, banning weapons on all city property. Bama Carey, who I'm the president of, brought it to the attention of the council and then City Administrator Collins that this was illegal and the city didn't have the authority to do so. The answer that we got was, we're going to pass this into law anyway. Bama Carey raised enough ruckus that the NRA sent a representative to Northport where he, myself, Mr. Collins, and Ron Davis met together. This was on or about Friday, October the 12th of 2012. The proposed ordinance was thrown out after Mr. Sullivan, the NRA representative, said if it was passed, they'd get involved. The council then passed a city ordinance that mirrored state law, which you are certainly able to do so and you have that authority. The following morning, however, the Tuscaloosa News read, "Northport passes a city ordinance that won't allow guns on city property." I got that here if anybody wants to see that. If you are seen openly carrying or just carrying in a city park or building, you will be asked to leave. Still, the no weapon sign stayed on our doors here. We made attempts to get them removed, even to the point of sending council members information packets where the laws enclosed stating the fact you have no authority to place them there. Our efforts fell on deaf ears. It was late October when I filed a complaint with the Attorney General's Office. I have the letter that I sent to the Attorney General complaining about the signs and the letter that City Attorney, now City Attorney Ron Davis, sent back to them. In Ron's letter, he states very plainly the fact that if he understands the law, the city has no right or authority to prohibit weapons at City Hall except during a city council meeting, which is right now, which is the reason I'm unarmed right now. This brings us today to the day and the current sign, which says weapons restricted per code 13A 1161.2. Gentlemen, this sign compares with a condom because it gives a false sense of security to protect the user. You see the circle around the gun, no guns? Anybody that doesn't know any better would think that meant no weapons here. It's not true. Let's be clear, a sign has never, ever stopped a person with evil intent. It's interesting to note on these signs, there's also a picture of a gun with a red circle. This insinuates that a self-defense weapon by a law-abiding citizen, a permit-carrying, run through the background checks, is not allowed. I see this as a legal sign, but one that's very misleading. It's morally, spiritually corrupt, as I see it, because it attempts to mislead a trusting public. This borders on criminal coercion as it's trying to get someone to refrain from something that's perfectly legal by a threat from authority that's non-existent. Northport citizens should be able to trust their leaders to lead them with truth and character. I hope we can see here, Northport's authority comes from the state. The state claims all things even touching firearms are preempted by them and only them. They are the only ones who can make weapons law. And again, I say, the state allows Northport to ban weapons during City Council meetings. This brings me to my experience with your signs on April the 18th, one month ago. I came to City Hall to buy my vehicle tags. I saw the weapons restricted signs were still there, but I knew what restrictions meant during council meetings. And I cannot remember what council meeting, council person told me, but he said, "Well, you know what the signs mean, so they don't affect you, you just go right on ahead." I'm sure if I went far enough in my notes, I could find that. But, anyway, I knew what the restrictions were, and I walked in, just like I have for four years and on many occasions when paying my water bill. Everything was going fine until I was leaving. It was at time I was approached by a Northport police officer informed I could not have my self-defense weapon in City Hall. And I want to say right here, I do not find fault with the NPD for that. They had as much trouble, they had trouble understanding the sign because of the way it read and the pictures on the sign. The council is guilty because they've let these signs stay up so long. You're guilty of not being 100% truthful with the citizens of Northport, and in doing so, you made the City Hall a hostile environment for a legal, law-abiding citizen as myself. Almost everybody who sees your sign thinks this is a gun-free zone. It is not. Monday, the 18th, your sign placed me at risk, the law enforcement's at risk, and the city citizen of Northport at risk, all because of your unwillingness to completely tell the truth about weapons in City Hall. They didn't do anything wrong. They have a duty to respond, and I respect that. And I'll just say, on behalf of myself and the Chief Burton, his men were most cordial, most professional, and I appreciate that. Your sign says that weapons are restricted, but does not address what the restrictions is unless you know what the code states, and to know that, you must know where to look it up, how to read it. Your sign does not pass the moral nor spiritual test. In the realm of good character, your sign emits negative signals to all who have taken the time to learn and know the truth about the code. I have two questions for you this afternoon, and I'll be through. To the citizens of Northport, will you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, or will you continue with a misleading, confusing sign that puts a law-abiding citizen in a hostile environment and endangers not only him, but those who must, by duty, respond and figure out what your confusing sign means? When the law enforcement officers, and I know their adrenaline had to be up because somebody called in who thought this was a gun-free zone, and they were responding to a man with a gun, that put me at risk, that put them at risk, that put the citizens of Northport at risk because when they responded, and I'm pretty sure they came Code 10, as we call it in the fire department, they had to pass citizens to get here. Anytime you have an emergency response, it puts your citizens at risk. Will you right now, this is question number two, will you right now set aside whatever rules you need to, and one of you make the motion to remove these confusing signs to protect law-abiding citizens from being harassed and placed in harm's way just to make a point? In other words, will you make this oath to the citizens of Northport that you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and stand by the Constitution you swore to uphold? I'd be more than honored to remove the signs for you. I respectfully thank you for your time, and will entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Eddie.
Can I get a motion? I'm asking.
Well, the only thing I could probably just add some value to what you were just explaining, and I'm not an attorney, that's why I'm going to lean on Mr. Davis's response, but I do think we may be inside of the state law. I could be wrong, of course, I'm not an attorney, but as far as council making an oath and a motion, I don't know, without looking at a state law, I couldn't tell you what 13A 1168.112.
Would you like for me to read it for you, what it says? Do I have it right here?
No, if you'll bring me a copy, Eddie.
It seems important. You know, I hear somebody from the congregation saying no.
Well, just if you can bring me-
I'm here trying to hold the citizens of Northport to a high esteem and that our council only go by the law, and that's what we're here to do. That's what all of us want. We want you to follow the law. And, you know, for anybody to think that I'm up here for any other reason is wrong-headed thinking. This is not a three-minute limit. So, I can't get a motion to take the signs down?
Without going through legal, Eddie, I don't really know, me making that decision, you know, I just can't. I can't really do that. Now, I can't speak for council, but wouldn't that be something where we all just kind of look at the ordinance, look at the state law, and see if we're mirroring-
Thank you for your time, President Logan.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Ms. Eddie. Thank you. Second visitor to address the council, Bart Sessions. He's the head football coach at County. I don't think Coach Sessions is in the audience. If he's not, I know he's probably had a conflict. I know he's probably still at practice, so we'll reschedule with Coach Bart Sessions. Next visitor is Mr. Matt Adams with Raymond James. He's our next speaker. Matt, how are you?
Good evening.
Matt, in our pre-meeting, you gave us some good information regarding Northport and their financial history and our financial health regarding our bond rating and where we stand with an opportunity to refinance some bond loans in the future.
Yes. Let me review that, and I'll add a little bit to that, a little bit of additional information. In 2009, the city issued debt to finance certain projects and refinance some existing debt. Where we are today, we can actually refinance that debt, and council, that is similar to refinancing your home loan. You're basically not issuing any new debt, you're just taking advantage of lower interest rates, and you're also taking advantage of the city's improving credit. The city's credit has improved since we originally issued that debt in 2009, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in just a few minutes. But, you're taking advantage of those two factors to be able to lower the interest rate on some existing debt and save the city somewhere around $500,000. Maybe a touch higher, it may be up around $550,000, but somewhere in that neighborhood is essentially what you could save. So, again, we're not really extending any maturities of the debt. It's not going out any longer than what it originally goes out. It's just simply lowering the interest rate and taking advantage of some savings. Now, I mentioned the market has aided in this, but also the city's credit has improved since 2009 when we originally issued the debt. The city's credit in 2009 was an A+. An A+ is a great rating for a city. In 2013, the city's credit was upgraded to a double A-, that lowers your borrowing cost, just like if you go into a bank with a better credit score, a higher rating's going to lower your borrowing cost as you go into the market. So, that allows us to do what we're doing here today. That rating was, again, affirmed in 2014 and, again, about a year ago. So, we have consistently seen good rating results from this third party that comes in and examines the city. And, again, that's going to allow us to save about $500,000 to $550,000. When they went in and when the rating agency, who's called Standard &amp; Poor's or S&amp;P, they went in and looked at the city, there were several factors that they cited when they raised our credit rating. Those factors included the fact that the city of Northport's economy has been doing so well since 2009 when they initially issued the rating. They also cited the fact that the city has very strong management and very strong management practices, and what they look at on management is they look at how you budget, they look at how you plan, how you put money aside and reserve money for the future. They also mentioned that you have very strong budget practices and did a good job adhering to the budget that you passed when they upgraded us. And, really, one of the factors that led to the upgrade was the fact that the city has money in reserve, holds money back, and has been, you know, fiscally sound in how they've handled the city's money. So, these factors basically are working in our favor and can allow us to save a little over half a million dollars if you guys want to approve going forward with lowering the interest rate on your debt. Any questions?
Hey, Matt, I asked this question in pre-meeting, but I'll ask it in this one. With that double A rating, with the timing of this bond refinancial opportunity, I guess you don't foresee rates going down any, do you?
Yeah. It's a good question. Interest rates are, they, in the last week, they hit an all-time low. We mentioned that in pre-council meeting. And, as I said then, you know, we can kind of gamble with interest rates, but when you hit an all-time low, why not take advantage of it? And let's just go ahead and get in the market as quickly as we can and get it priced and get the interest rate set and get done with it. We see several things later in the year which could have a negative impact on interest rates for the city and its refinancing efforts. The Federal Reserve has consistently talked about raising rates sometime in the summer months. Also, we're in an election year, and that generally adds some uncertainty to what interest rates are doing. So, we want to kind of get in and get this done before all of that uncertainty and all that possible ability of rates rising enters into the picture.
So, general market probably got the ability to make or save about a half a million. Bank qualified is, what, 490, I guess?
Yeah, so, the general market's about $550,000, and then the bank qualified is about 490. So, we expect the savings, if we were to do something today, to be in that range. Of course, while we're going through this process, it takes about a month and a half to two months, and we will keep everybody on the council updated as rates move. If they move down, those savings will increase. If they move up, then we may have to step back and say, "Well, maybe we need to wait for a few minutes, a few days."
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, very good news. Item 7A1, under unfinished business, is a second reading of an ordinance amending the Northport Municipal Code pertaining to food trucks. Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President. This, as you know, we've had an ordinance allowing food trucks, and this amends to allow food carts as well with the same restrictions. So, it's ready for adoption by the council. As you'll recall, at the pre-meeting, I think one or probably two meetings ago, there was a gentleman here with a food truck, and he has this commercial kitchen. The only difference is that he doesn't have an engine that he drives around, he pulls it around like a cart, and it can be moved by hand. It's a full-blown commercial kitchen with all the equipment that's necessary to be safe and get a health department rating.
All right, thank you. So, basically, the language just adds to the food cart, excuse me, food truck ordinance just adding food carts?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve that ordinance amending the Northport Municipal Code pertaining to food trucks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
New business. Item 8A1 is a first reading of a resolution authorizing Tuscaloosa County Industrial Development Authority, or TCIDA, to act on behalf of the city of Northport. Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President. This is, IDAs ask us to pass this. It's identical to what has also been passed by the city of Tuscaloosa and Tuscaloosa County. Basically, it updates the authority of the IDA to ask to act on behalf of these three entities as state law has changed. It modifies our authorization of them to mimic state law.
All right, thank you. I'll offer that up for a first reading on that one. Eight B1 is a resolution authorizing change order number one, wastewater treatment plant, drying bed improvements out of utilities. Mr. Larry Ingram, this is basically a change order regarding the media inside of the drain lines are properly, we found that these were improperly installed. We're just trying to have a change order to cover the modifications regarding the drain lines in relation to the media, those eight-inch drain lines, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion to approve that change order in the amount of $7,520 and authorize the city administrator's office to execute the necessary documents and requisitions needed to proceed with the project. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item two is a resolution authorizing a $5 million line of credit with BBVA Compass Bank. Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President. This authorizes the city administrator only to set up a line of credit that does not allow any expenditures or any borrowing against it in the event, one of several events occurs, we would come back to the council to approve an actual use of the line of credit. This just simply sets it up. It's much like a second mortgage on your home. You have it there in case you need it. Some of the anticipated uses are the Midlary Road cost overruns, which we would expect to be incurred by the city and then hopefully repaid 100% on the dollar through the road commission that's been newly formed. Sales tax. Also, we're going to be talking later about some land acquisitions and some other local costs for the levee repair on the very east end of the levee north of Snowmills, I mean, north of Rose Mine Road. And then also, there's some potential retail incentives that may require some cash on the part of the city. And, again, in the event the council were decided to move in that direction, you would have this line of credit available to do that. But, again, this simply just sets it up. It doesn't allow any expenditures at all. So, we would, Mr. Swan would bring back any requests to utilize that line of credit, and it would require a vote of council, an open council meeting before any of that money would be touched.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution authorizing our city administrator to open a $5 million line of credit with BBVA Compass Bank. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item three is a resolution authorizing our city administrator to execute a contract with Motorola Solutions for the maintenance of the radio systems, communication equipment. Mr. Ram out of IT.
Mr. President, that's for the power system that we have that accompanies the city at Lake Orleans, Martin Spur, and Northport Police Department. This is just the maintenance contract with Motorola.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution authorizing our city administrator to execute any contracts necessary with Motorola Solutions for the maintenance of our radio system and necessary equipment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city administrator's office to execute a contract with Emerson Network Power, Libert Services Incorporated for the maintenance of the tower site, uninterruptible power supplies, or UPS. Mr. Ram, this is basically a stop-gap system, so when the power does go out at some of these tower sites, we'll have the capabilities to have some auxiliary power until the power comes back on. Is that right?
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing our city administrator to execute the contracts with Emerson Network Power, Libert Services Incorporated for the maintenance of our tower site, UPS uninterruptible power supplies. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item five's been deleted. Ladies and gentlemen, item six that was added, resolution engaging underwriter and bond counsel. Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President. This employs Raymond James and Bradley Arant to move forward with work on presenting the potential refinancing to the council.
Thank you. I'll make that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item seven is a resolution naming interim city engineer. Mr. Swan.
Mr. President, since my performance as interim city administrator, that's naturally taken me away from my duties and responsibilities required of me as city engineer. To ensure that the council and the staff and our citizens, the service to those groups go unimpeded, I'm recommending that the city council approve a resolution naming John Powell Webb as interim city engineer.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution naming John Powell Webb as interim city engineer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
Councilman, excuse me, President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to execute a two-year maintenance agreement with Ease LLC for maintenance of the tower site generators. Mr. Ram, this is basically, we're going to do this, and probably at some point, we'll look at contract consolidation in the future. Is that correct?
Correct, Mr. President.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to enter into a two-year maintenance agreement with Ease LLC for tower site generators. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item C is our consent agenda. We have seven items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training for various employees of our departments, and we have one, excuse me, travel and training for one employee out of ADA CF Evaluation Transition Plans. That's out of our Planning Department of Public Rights Way Accessibility. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed with the seven items. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item nine is reports of special committees to council. We have none to report. Item 10, public hearings. We have one on the agenda out of our engineering department. Mr. Swan, you can give us a brief update on this, but this is a first reading of a Mr. Swan, you can give us a brief update on this, but this is a first reading of a resolution ordering the vacation of right of way of a portion of Twelfth Street. And this Twelfth Street is located near Riverside Feed and Seed, I guess, at the Campus Collections, uh, property, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct, uh, we began this process, um, approximately eighteen months ago, uh, we've had a, uh, a public hearing. And this will be a, uh, and we've established the price, uh, vacation, we've notified the adjacent property owners and we've no- notified the utility companies and, uh, everybody's in agreement. There, there, there've been no objections to my knowledge, uh, we're ready to move forward with the first reading.
Alright. By code, we'll have to open the floor up for a public hearing, so by, by code, I will officially open up the floor for public comment for or against the vacation of right of way for a portion of Twelfth Street. Floor is now open, open comment. Anyone speaking against, for? Hearing none? I will close it. I will actually offer that for a first reading. At the record stand, Mr. Swan, I'll, I'll offer that for a first reading.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Item eleven, city administrator's business, Mr. Swan.
No, sir, I have no business.
Item twelve, departmental business, Chief Burton, we have one item, it's an ABC license transfer, uh, it, it is, and, and forgive me if I'm, you know, miss, misspeak on this, this is Barack LLC. Doing businesses Crossroad Texaco. Uh, Chief, we have any issues regarding your, your process or background?
No, there weren't any, uh, issues on this application for business license.
I'll make a motion to approve the ABC license for Barack LLC doing businesses Crossroad Texaco, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sam.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. League Department, Mr. Davis, I think we have an exec- executive session request.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, um, I would request that, and you may, it's up to the council, you may want to go ahead and finish the rest of the agenda and then go back in except for an adjournment. I would anticipate that this would take optimistically twenty minutes, it could be as long as thirty minutes, and then I would expect to come back out and actually take some action. I know often when we go into executive session, there's no action anticipated, but I would expect that there may be some action on one or more of the items discussed. Um, we're going to discuss the purchase of real estate, uh, which will be two parcels to assist with the, um, repair of the levee by moving the levee, uh, slightly and also making the base wider, uh, and the other item is the potential, uh, preliminary negotiations on trade or commerce, a potential retail development incentive. Uh, and so, uh, these, both of these are allowed to be, or all three of these items are allowed to be discussed in executive session. And the council may elect to come out and take, um, a vote on one or more of these items, but you may wish to wait on, and move this to right before the adjournment, uh, so everyone don't have to sit and wait for thirty minutes.
Thank you.
But it's certainly up to the council.
No, I, I think that's a better idea, Mr. Davis, we, we will go through our regular agenda and we'll come back to your executive session request and, uh, give the public time to, uh, go through and, and comment as needed, so if council and mayor doesn't have any problems with that, we'll just go through our normal agenda. Alright, we'll come back to it, Mr. Davis. Uh, item thirteen is public comment. We have a few citizens sign up to speak, I'll start right at the top, Mr. Rodney Pelt Senior. Mr. Pelt, thank you for coming out, please state your name and address for the record.
Rodney Terrell Pelt Senior, one five three five two Timber Springs Lane, Mauna, Alabama, three five four seven four. Um, Honorable Mayor, uh, Honorable President, City Council Member, everybody present, I'm here on behalf of Abmuga Shrine Temple number two two one to invite you all out and also solicit, solicit the support of, um, the council and the mayor from Northport for our two thousand sixteen diabetes walk. Uh, we are, the, the shrine and, and daughters of, of Abmuga Temple are designated to, um, fight diabetes, stamp out diabetes, and that's our mission and our goal this year with this diabetes walk. It will be held on June the fourth of two thousand sixteen at, uh, Matthews Elementary School Track. Uh, we, we're gonna have diabetes testing, face painting, food, music, fun and games for everybody, Big Al's gonna be there. So we just want to ask the city council to come out and support this great event, we know diabetes is running rampant in, uh, in the African-American community, but also in, in all other communities, actually. And we want to, uh, do something to raise some awareness, but also, um, you know, hope we can stamp it out at some point in time, so we just would like solicit your support and, uh, and just invite you to come out to this great event. And, uh, we also, we've been working closely with Mr. President about this and we appreciate all the support you've given us thus far and, and allowing us to come to your great city to have this event.
Thank you, Ms. Pelt, I can, I can't speak for nobody else, but I know diabetes is something I can say firsthand out of my family, so I, I, I think, I think everybody's gonna be at this thing if they can, what time is it?
Uh, it starts at eight o'clock.
Eight AM.
Eight AM, sorry.
Alright.
Eight AM, and, uh, I also want to introduce some, some, uh, Nobles and Daughters.
Yeah, let the Nobles, let the Nobles stand up, Nobles, Nobles from, from, from the Abmuga Temple.
Shrine Temple.
Alright.
The daughters from Abmuga Court.
Very good. Thank these men and women, I appreciate you, Mr. Pelt, thank you guys, we'll definitely, I appreciate you bringing to the council, we will definitely support it and I really appreciate you holding it in our city.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Pelt.
Alright.
Second citizen, Christie Price.
How y'all doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm exhausted right now, but I'll be alright.
Alright, what can we do?
Um, I wanted to come to you, I live on thirty-one oh-two thirtieth street in Northport, which is right off of Main, or about three blocks directly behind the Shell Station right over here. And we have had so many problems with people speeding on that street, that, I mean, it makes you almost scared to walk out of your driveway to check your mail. And most of these speeders are the school buses, I mean, they come up and down through there like, I mean, I think they think the signs are invisible, the stop signs, because they don't care. And Northport has done a good job troll, you know, coming to patrol in through our neighborhood, but they're just not there at the right times. And so, we know in this neighborhood that, um, years ago, there were speed breakers on that road, and something happened and they had to fix the road. So they never reinstalled the speed breaker, so I went to all my neighbors and asked them would they sign this petition, and it's basically just to y'all to see if there's anything y'all can do about speed breakers or having different times for people to sit over there and try to catch some of these speeders, because there's elderly people, there's, you know, there's children playing out there, and I mean, you've got cats running around out there, you know, it's just, I don't want anybody to get hurt. So I'm just, you know, begging for your help in our neighborhood.
Christie, can we?
Sir?
What's the street?
Thirty.
Thirtieth Street.
Yeah, thirtieth street, thirty-one oh-two thirtieth street, it's the road, I guess, running right behind Shells.
Well, no, sir, um, the road that runs directly below, on the side of Shell Station is Thirty First Way.
Okay.
Thirty First Way leads you to the second stop sign, which goes this way off of Main and that's thirtieth street.
Gotcha.
And that goes directly to the back of the school.
Okay.
So that's where the buses are coming and they're using it as a cut through. So, it's really dangerous.
Can, can we get a copy of the, of that petition?
You can have it.
I don't want to, what, what we'll do, Christie, is, and I know there's a process to speed tables and I don't want to speak out of, out of turn, I know John Powell will probably have to add some value to what I'm, I'm going to explain, but uh, there is a process where the, the homeowners of residence, and Charles, you helped me out too, if the homeowners of residence requesting speed tables, of course, we'll have to do some traffic studies on it to see what's the, uh, frequency and the, uh, speed of the drivers in that area. And it may be to where staff may see that it does fall into an area where speed tables are warranted.
Okay.
Um, but Charles, you can add, you can add to whatever on, on this conversation. So.
Ms. Price?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. What, what's your phone number, is it on?
No, sir, I'll tell it to you, it's two oh-five, three nine three, nine one five one. But now I do work at Mercedes, so if you happen to call me and you get voicemail, leave me a message, because I rotate shifts every two weeks.
We'll do that.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
We will have, uh, John Powell's office keep contact to make sure what's the next step in the process, but, uh, having the, the petition with the signatures does, does start the step process in it, so, uh, we'll try to find a way to address the, uh, that issue in your area.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
President Logan.
Hey, Dennis, how are you?
I'm not trying to speak out of turn, that same street I talked about at the last meeting, and it did have a speed bump, so if anything, traffic's worse, if it had it before, it shouldn't be much difference, it should be worse.
Thank you. At the record show, Dennis Hambright. Alright. Mr. Schwab. Thank you, Ms. Schwab, please state your name and address.
Steven Schwab, twenty-five twenty-fifth street in Northport. I'm speaking about the subject that I talk about frequently, and that is building on what the previous speaker talked about. Uh, speed on the streets of Northport and particularly, uh, once again, on Fifth Street. Fifth Street, by the way, is, if it's a highway, it's the strangest highway I've ever seen because there's no signage indicating it's a highway. Uh, I've never been on a highway that didn't have signage. Um, the, um, we occasionally have had a traffic, uh, speed monitor across the street, measuring the speed of traffic going towards downtown Northport, but not coming out of downtown Northport. So, uh, if you don't, if you have a speed, uh, monitor, um, sometimes, of course, these are battery operated and they go away after a few days. And sometimes they come back and sometimes they don't, but you don't have law enforcement, uh, it's essentially worthless. Um, you, you see a car in front of you or a truck going fifty-five, sixty miles an hour, you do the same thing and it happens all the time. So you need more consistent law enforcement, uh, on that street. Approximately twenty-five thousand vehicles transit Fifth Street every twenty-four hours. We have backups starting before seven AM and continuing throughout the day in traffic jams at three PM in front of my house at twenty-five twenty-fifth street. Uh, Fifth Street was never intended to carry such heavy traffic, including eighteen-wheelers and Bama concrete trucks that routinely, routinely and consistently traverse Fifth Street. As I mentioned two weeks ago, the roadway needs to be resurfaced, and I, uh, would encourage you to consider putting in more speed bumps. The single speed bump that exists between, on Fifth Street between Main and Twenty-Fifth Avenue has been degraded, it's essentially worthless. Uh, it's the only speed bump you have on that road. Uh, I would suggest you also consider, uh, putting in either roundabouts, um, or islands on Fifth Street to slow traffic down, thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen is Ms. Diana Schwab, Ms. Schwab, thank you.
Thank you. Diana Schwab, twenty-five twenty-fifth street, Northport. Uh, gentlemen of the council, please take down that timing monitor, it creates a hostile environment. We come up to this podium as if we're prize fighters, fighting in two-minute rounds or three-minute rounds, and you, you are going to get hostility and people looking for a knockout rather than civil discourse. It's, uh, not a good idea, and I encourage you to, uh, dispense with the practice of the timer. It infringes on the, uh, freedom of speech of your public, and it does not encourage people to come and enjoy their time at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Allgood. Thank you, David.
Hello, Mayor, President and, uh, Council, before you start the shot clock, uh, I just wanted to, to preface this, I, I'm gonna read into the record an email I sent to the mayor and the council, uh, on Friday, and the mayor was courteous enough to respond to me, so some of this would change, uh, and I'll note the changes after I read it, okay? Started it anyway, okay? A few weeks ago, Scott Collins resigned, and please note, those were air quotes, as Northport's city administrator. For some unknown reason, the mayor and council saw fit to reward Mr. Collins with a severance package of one year's salary and health insurance worth nearly one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. When did the city of Northport become the Goldman Sachs of municipal governments, issuing golden parachutes to civil servants? This accident, this action is unprecedented, but now it sets a precedent. When each of you leaves office, will you reward yourselves in the same manner? This one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars comes from taxes paid by the business owners and residents of Northport. The money does not belong to the mayor and council, you are entrusted with our tax dollars, and in this instance, you may have violated that trust in an unethical and possibly illegal manner. As a taxpaying resident and business owner in Northport, as well as an individual with legal resources, I strongly urge and advise you to reverse this decision and return the one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to the city treasury. Now, I do have a few questions on that matter, and I'm not sure if your legal counsel will allow you to answer, but I will ask, uh, first, who came up with this idea? How and where did the meetings take place and who voted to support it?
I'll open the floor for council, but I can probably say, of course, the news is here too, I, I don't think I answer my phones anyway, but that's a joke. Uh, Mr. Davis, if you want to add some value to that?
Uh, yes, sir, this is for public comment, not for, uh, de- Have comments to make, you're certainly welcome to.
I can't ask a question?
That's, that's up to the council president, but normally, uh, this is for public comment, not for depositions.
Okay, alright. See, my time is running out, uh, I would ask, well, you don't have to answer, obviously, uh, I would ask Mayor Herndon, I know that you were not involved with the meeting, but I would ask if you support this package to Mr. Collins?
Uh, I didn't support any of the things that happened.
I didn't support any of the things, the circumstances or the way it was handled, no.
Okay, uh, seven seconds. Was the advisory position given to Mr. Collins after he resigned tied to this severance package? Is this not a redundancy of the position Mr. Alan Harper is currently filling on an interim basis? Is, in other words, is it two jobs that are doing the same thing?
I think Alan is working free, working for zero dollars. Uh, and Mr. Collins, of course, is working on some retail opportunities that he was the only one involved with, so he is going to be required to push these things on the goal line.
Is that why he's being paid this year's annual salary?
Well, he'll still be involved in the road commission as well, because he was the one that set up some of the financial stuff on it, but I don't want to speak and not say anything that you may just hold against me, so.
I wouldn't, Jay, I won't hold anything against you, I'm just saying, if you and I resigned from Para
Yeah.
tomorrow, we're not getting a year's salary.
No.
And I, that's my question, is why this was done when someone resigned supposedly of free will? Why are you given a year's salary, I don't understand that. This is something done in private industry, but these are tax dollars, it's not private industry.
Duly noted.
Okay.
Thank you, David. Second citizen, Ms. Gina Allgood, Ms. Gina? Thank you, Ms. Gina.
I was a, um, I was a pinch hitter, so, uh, we didn't know if we were going to have enough time to, to get through David's questions, and, um, as his better half, I told him I would come up here and finish if we needed to. Um, I think he pretty much asked all the questions that he wanted, um, you did really, you asked all of them. Okay, the last one, was the year's salary paid to Mr. Collins in a lump sum, and if so, who authorized this payment?
I'm not sure, I'm, I'm gonna go back and defer Ms. Allgood to my, my attorney.
Okay, um, and, you know, I, I have to say that it was kind of a shock to see that in the paper without, without knowing, you know, what was going on, so it would be really great if we could get some clarification of that for the, for our citizens, I hear people back here agreeing with me, so, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our citizen last to speak is Mr. Terry Ware, Mr. Terry? Mr. Terry, thank you so much, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, my brothers, sisters in Christ, I'm Terry Ware, nine eleven tenth street, Northport, and, uh, thank you for inviting me, and I really been appreciate what you've been doing and, uh, Scott Stevenson and McKenna been passing by and just take more time about the grass and
Yeah.
bushes, I'm afraid bushes, I'm scared of bush, bushes and critters down the line.
We, we appreciate you giving us the opportunity, we, we rode by today and we've been sitting, we're gonna send out a lot of letters around your area, around Tenth and all that.
Yeah, and I appreciate you inviting me, and thank you Scott Stevenson for putting up with me and McKenna and you.
That's alright.
Yeah, and Nettie Ree, Nettie, Nettie Ree, she's on my street too, so anytime.
Anytime, just.
Just, just keep riding them.
I will.
You know, about, about the grass.
I have.
They cuss me out.
Well, I've been riding them.
People cuss me out about the grass and stuff.
Yes, I've been riding them, so I've been.
I'm not gonna bother nobody no more about the grass, you, you came down today to see how my yard was.
Yeah, it looks very nice, everybody else is gonna take suit as well, so
Yeah, and, uh.
We're gonna make them go, we're gonna make them cut those yards.
Yeah, I know it's gonna take a little time about them bushes, because I'm scared of them bushes.
We'll work on the bushes too, Terry.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, and come back next time, I told you, you, you invited, come back. Ron, item twelve is under your, your business executive session, Ron, do we need to, uh, vote to go into executive session?
Yes, Mr. President, we need to vote, certainly, I'm certainly not encouraging anyone to leave, you're welcome to stay, but in case you find something better to do, and I'm waving by to some people. Uh, but, um, you're certainly welcome to wait and see what happens as we may take a vote or two when we get back, but, uh, otherwise, I think that, other than those potential items, then there'll be an adjournment and that would be all.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn temporarily into executive session to discuss real estate purchase, uh, the session should last no longer than twenty minutes, uh, to discuss trade or con- to discuss trade or commerce items and of course, real estate purchase regarding a levee improvement project. That's in a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
We're in executive session, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be back no later than twenty minutes. All right, folks, we are out of our executive session. We'll continue with our agen, on the agenda. I do want to make a motion, and Ron, you make sure I, I get this right if we want to go ahead and do it now. That we need to try to do a, a motion or some type of temp motion to allow the city administrator's office and the city attorney's office to further negotiations in anticipation of the proposed property acquisition that was discussed.
Yes, sir, that's proper.
Okay.
That, that's on the levy project.
That's on the levy project. Thank you, Mayor. So I'll make a motion to allow the city administrator's office and the city attorney's office to further negotiations in regards to the levy construction project related to all aspects of property acquisition. So that's in a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item fourteen is mayor and council members' business. The Honorable Councilwoman Judy Hayes, of course, is not here tonight. Again, she is recuperating. We hope she gets better soon and we will see her shortly, hopefully, so keep here in your prayers. District two, under my business, I wanted to, with the full house tonight, full house, if you were not in the pre-meeting, we are having a Trucks by the Tracks event. That's gonna be May the twenty-sixth. That's on a Thursday from eleven AM to one thirty PM. It's an opportunity for us to kick the tires in our new food truck ordinance. If you saw tonight, we actually made an amendment to our food truck ordinance. It's just a way for us to gauge the temperature in our food truck industry and try to have a way that we can balance the needs of our brick and mortar restaurants and our food truck industry. So it's gonna be at downtown Northport, Thursday, May twenty-sixth, from eleven AM to one thirty PM. Again, if, if the interest is such to where the city sees fit, we may be able to expand it into a, a food truck park where periodically during art night or some special event, we can have food trucks down that will complement downtown Northport. So again, I've got some flyers in the back. You'll see some, some advertising pretty soon about that. That is Trucks by the Tracks. Again, thank you, Whitney and Scott Stevens for working hard on that one. Also, I see Robert, I see you in the audience as well. I know I wanted to call you about MLK. I think council will need some further opportunities to discuss some, some minor details in the project. But the project, as of right now, you know, we, we got to a point where we needed to use that federal dollar and council had, you know, some questions if the federal dollars were still available in December of last year. But unfortunately, they were not. But to council, excuse me, Congresswoman Sewell's credit and the Federal Highway Department Administration in Washington, they reallocated those funds. So with that being said, those funds have been reallocated, so now the council needs to maybe discuss further in terms of moving forward with the project and creating a schedule of work, a new schedule of work with ALDOT. So council needs some time to kind of discuss that, so hopefully we'll have something on this next agenda. And actually, that is, that is all under my business. District three, Councilman Sullivan.
One item of business, Mr. President, as you know, we discussed in the pre-meeting about Warrior Baseball approaching the city for some assistance funding wise, helping with the electric bill down there. Jay, I don't have them all.
Yeah, I think it was discussed Warrior Baseball in terms of some of their needs and, and the city's requests from the city to maybe offset some of their costs from a general operating standpoint.
Yeah, so at this time, Mr. President, I'd like to offer a motion to allow the city administrator to enter an agreement with Warrior Baseball to assist with paying a light bill for, through one year.
Okay. Let's, you, you want to make that motion for June one to June one?
June one to June, yes, sir. That'll be fine. You can add that to the motion.
All right. I will second that motion. Any questions or comments?
No, we used to support Kentucky back when we first came in and we had to make all the agency funding cuts and so I'm happy to see this.
Yes, sir. And, and we've got some financial information that was given to Mr. Swan's office just for the record, so they can get an, so council can get an idea of what Warrior Baseball had been paying prior in previous years, so we, we do have a, a, a measuring stick to go by. So we have a motion by Councilmember Sullivan, second by Council President Logan, comment by the Honorable Mayor Bobby Herndon. Any further comments? Hearing none, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. District four, Councilman Sims.
I have none, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. District five, Councilman Harper, of course, is not with us tonight, the Honorable Mayor Bobby Herndon.
Just a few things. As always, I appreciate the staff, all the city employees, public works, administrative, fire department, police department, you do, guys do a, a great job. Had the opportunity last Wednesday to be part, or be not only honor flight, but once again to, to sing the national anthem on the plane for the World War Two veterans and the Korean veterans and it, it was awesome. But I hate to say, this was the last honor flight for the World War Two veterans. But what the Rotary Club would like to do is to have other honor flights coming up in the very near future for other Korean War and then starting with Vietnam veterans, which is awesome. They're gonna be trying to generate the funds to do that and I just want to tell them how much I appreciate them for supporting our veterans like they do.
Thank you, Mayor. Item fifteen is adjournment. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Sims. All in favor, please say yes. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.